I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for former teacher Mary McIntyre, who passed away recently. This is the February 11th meeting of the Clinton School Committee. I'd like to start with a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Thank you. Is there a second?
No, second.
Motion being made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the bills? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of January 28?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. And a second?
So moved.
Thank you. A motion being made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes?
Mr. McIntyre's name was misspelled on the adjournment, but I don't know if we want to fix it or not.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle R.
Can we hear, is there any other discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended for the meeting of January 28? Unanimous, thank you very much. Charles.
Good evening. Clinton High School hosted its annual open house on the night of January 30th with gracious turnout and great success all around. After performances from the band and chorus in the auditorium, parents and students were able to tour around the school, visiting classrooms and exploring the opportunities that CHS provides its students. Sports and clubs were on full display, from basketball in the gym to cookies baked by the student council, to the robotics team continuing their operations in the workshop hallway. Despite the whirls of snow, the open house was attended by many and became a worthwhile night for all. A big congratulations to the girls varsity basketball team, who qualified for the postseason district playoffs. They've led a fantastic season thus far, and we wish them luck in the coming games. As our co-op winter sports with partnering high schools comes to a close, we congratulate those all-stars athletes that scored big points for their teams this past weekend. Kylie Dobek and Autumn Garcia with the Clinton Hudson co-op gymnastics team finished second overall in league championships competition this weekend. Autumn placed in her individual events beam and floor, while Kylie finished fourth in the all-around competition. Revan Casella was crowned the D2 Sectionals Champion of Wrestling for the Nashoba Clinton Wrestling Team, and Liam Pia broke the school record with a time of 1 minute 31.92 seconds in his 200 freestyle, and placed third in the sectional tournament. Good job to all of their hard work. The spring in sports will be ushering in a new co-op sport, lacrosse, which will begin recruitment this Wednesday, February 13. The all-school play continues its gas rehearsals, along with tech practices, in preparation for the showings of high school musical junior. Team 126, CHS's first robotics team, has been continuing their labor here in the building, including tonight, in which they have been constructing their competition bot. A meeting is being held tonight for students and their parents that will be traveling to Spain in April as a part of the language department's annual trip of learning and a once-in-a-lifetime experience. The CHS will be hosting its fine arts night at the school this Tuesday, February 12, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The night is dedicated to celebrating the many artistic talents of our students in the visual, language, musical, and performing arts. Visual displays and live performances will take place in and near the CHS library. The high school's math department will be offering an SAT prep course leading up to the March 9th SAT that will help students get ready for the crucial exam. It will be held in Room 211 from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on Tuesdays and Thursdays, with the exclusion of winter break, beginning tomorrow, February 12. Thank you.
Charles, thank you for that comprehensive report. Anything from, yes, sir?
Charles, we sat down to do that this morning before the early release was set for the ice night, so you're just doing your job. But that will have to be rescheduled because we don't show up.
Okay. Do we have anyone from the PTA or special needs pack tonight?
Nothing.
Thank you. Anything from CTA?
Nothing.
Thank you. And is there any public comment? Thank you. Superintendent's report?
All right, so the first thing we had, this is a facilities section of the strategic plan for this month. So I'd like to have, I think we have Russ here, or do you want to have Russ step up for me?
Yeah.
So in a minute when Russ gets back, we'll have Russ come up and we'll have Phil come up.
Do you want to take the agenda out of order?
No, I'll kind of, I'll just kind of go through a little bit here in the strategic plan. So if you look, you know, some of those goals to increase energy efficiencies and effort to improve learning while reduce costs to your organization. We have done a few of the end grid improvements this year. I know we've been meeting to start looking at projects we might qualify for next year. A lot of the changes have been changing out, a lot of the lighting with the LED lighting. Reduce the operational lifecycle costs associated with mechanical systems, building points and grounds. So we're looking at, you know, increasing, starting the more of the preventative maintenance. We've been, Russ has been doing a nice job of finding some things, particularly some things like air filters and certain things that we've been able to try to service on a more regular basis to help make the systems run more efficiently. Improve the cleanliness, audibility, and safety of the organizational facilities. That kind of comes into the staffing and resources as we look to sort of, you know, Russ is putting together a plan to start reorganizing the facilities department. Work with support agencies, the police fire set to provide secure and safe environments. I guess I can give an update on this one. I know the police is doing a training. I say that I wanted to hear that next week during February vacation, the police is coming to do some, police department will be doing a training at Clinton Elementary School for themselves on how they would respond in certain crisis situations. They've actually invited the administrators to come down on the third day of that training so they could, they could see. Looking at installing and maintaining improved hardscapes, developing and maintaining a preventive maintenance plan, and developing a capital improvement plan. I know we've seen part of the capital improvement plan. So most of these things actually have fallen under, you know, they fall under really the director of facilities, Russ. Russ, if you want to come on up. We're also joined tonight, we have Phil Duffy here. One of the first things we wanted to talk about was the fire station feasibility study, which was completed, shared with you. I don't believe, this is not the final, final copy, it's pretty close, but it was something that we wanted to get in your hands so you could see it. We don't have to have, I know you just got it on Friday, so we don't have to have, I don't anticipate that everyone has fully digested all 66 pages, and we actually, Phil was able to confirm that we would have the architects here next meeting, right?
Sure, the architects are available for presentations of the committee at your next meeting, which time the i's will be dotted and the t's will be crossed, and some of the plans may be revisited in a light way as part of a presentation of different alternatives to.
Perhaps it's premature, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Duffy on the, on the proposal at this time?
I just had one. I noticed that there was language in here about the fire station not being on any of, like, the historical list of, like, historical buildings. Is that anything, is that, would that be an advantage to us, or would that be like a disadvantage? Because once it's on that list, you're limited to, like, what you can do to the building, or how does that work?
It's not an advantage because the advantages accrue to income-producing properties.
Oh, okay.
If we were included in the National Register, then we could apply for historic investment tax credits, but we're a nonprofit, we don't pay taxes, so tax credits aren't available to us.
Okay.
It is listed on the MACR, which is Massachusetts Cultural Resource Inventory System, so it is listed as a property, but it's not, doesn't have National Register designation, which is the threshold for taxes.
Anything else? It's probably prudent to wait for the architects anyway, and that would give us a couple of weeks to go through it before we revisit it again, but, okay.
Are there any other comments or anything you wanted to share about the feasibility study?
No, I think you'll read it, it's fairly self-explanatory. The process we followed is described. I'm only to say that if any, any member of the committee, as you were going through the material, if you have any questions, you know where to find me, happy to pick up the phone, answer an email, any questions you may have in anticipation of the meeting on the 25th.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Phil.
Cheers.
So Russ, I kind of skimmed through quickly the, some of the stuff from the facility strategic planning. I don't know if there's anything more in detail you wanted to go over.
Well, I can, like, the energy stuff we've gone through last year. We had done quite a bit of retrofit on lighting and controls at the high school and the middle school, and the annual save, electric savings to us on that and out there installed is $51,94 a year. The total cost of the district after rebates was $237,000. So that's a payback of 4.3 years. So, you know, in halfway through the year four, that 53, 343, it's got to become ours every year. In over 20 years in time, it's a little over a million dollars in savings in today's dollars.
And just one clarification, even though that's a cost to the district, that's basically provided through a... Shared savings. Yeah, no cost kind of financing through, on our bill. So it's not like we had to, we didn't upfront that money, it's kind of, as we realize, savings is kind of built into our, our payment.
Right, it's just, it's a non-interest loan, it's actually the savings that are in the bill right now just go to the utilities to pay off the debt. And that's on the lighting side and the electricity use side, and on a maintenance side, you're saving, where is that one? That's about 1,500 a year, or almost $30,000 over 20 years on labor in today's dollars, which only goes up. So going into phase two, I met with them last week, and asked them to make some revisions because I thought the numbers didn't work out too well, but it looks like we're going to come in at an additional savings of 27,000 a year. And I expect the total payback on the project to be 3.9 to 4.1 years. They had to put in a higher level equipment, and I told them to back it down, we didn't need the gold standard. And one, you know, what's, we have now is good enough, we don't have to upgrade it. And I also, I'm going to have them also look at the admin building now, just to see what we can get for savings out of this, as we are, it is an ongoing operation. We left it alone at first, we're going to add that to the list, that'll add some more savings down time. So, and I think that will end the simple energy upgrades for us. Nothing else will bear fruit at that point. And then I heard the super dangle through the list, you hit it pretty well. Security is also, did you mention cameras? You guys know what the cameras.
Have we, I know we signed that purchase order, have we scheduled any of that?
Yeah, we signed them, we've already got the first invoice. We'll get the first, we'll get the install date going. And, you know, on security also, on the, on the hardscapes around the buildings, when I first came in, I noticed there's a lot of security issues with the hardscapes we have, and we should address them this summer. Cut back the bushes and trees, you know, they're brushing up against the buildings, it's also maintenance issues. So that's one of the other things in here. The maintenance plan is always ongoing, capital plan, you know, we went through that last time I was there a little bit.
Were we utilizing SchoolDude for the...
Yeah, most people are using it. I've got, we need any more training, people aren't using it as much, get used to using it, and that'll be, it'll start working a lot better. And we've got the intern, Melissa, who's shown up there with me tonight, is an intern from Mass Maritime Academy Affiliates Program. So she's helping us get all of our online stuff up and running, which is great, it's been a big asset. And so the SchoolDude is just online work order system, it'll provide costing and analysis and future trending and capital oversight.
Any questions?
Yeah, I don't know if this is up for here or you're under new business. I know we did a walkthrough at the beginning of the year. Is there a possibility of doing one, I really, I was sort of my mind of thinking of doing it at Christmas time, which was in the halfway point, either after February vacation, sometime before the end of the year, because I mean, it did it here, you know, it's hard to work, the custodians and the maintenance guys do, you know, kids are running out the door, it's, it looks worse than it really is. Is possibly doing a kind of a...
Yeah, maybe try to, try to schedule one in, like, March or something like that, so we can try to do a round of them, and then that'll maybe help, help us with setting some priorities for the summer as well.
Yeah, I'm just speaking for one, I just actually, I thought of that in December and now differently.
I think it's a good idea, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
That we refer back to the fall list and sort of do this round as sort of just a walkthrough with Russ on the punch list?
Right, yeah, that's it, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So I can try to, we can, we can probably try to get something going through email, get some dates scheduled, and try to schedule some walkthroughs.
Yeah, yeah, no problem, it'd be easy.
And we'll try to do it like a follow-up, like the same people do the same building.
Sure, okay.
You're okay with that? So we're still six weeks away from spring. Do you feel like the, the outdoor facilities, playing fields, they'll all be ready to go for, you know, weather permitting, when, when we're ready to start?
Yeah, I think actually, I went ahead and I had Mike Haitau come in and do some work on some of the fields over, the ball field on the side of the middle school. They're severely, you know, under, under-maintained, we dealt with that. We're going to do some additional fertilizing programs and, on the big field. And we also have just installed some new web-based timers and controllers for all the irrigation systems, so we'll be able to closely monitor the watering, and it's tied into web-based weather data. So not only will we have better watering, you know, not overwatering, not underwatering, we'll also save a substantial amount of water on the fields.
Wow, that's great.
So we put that in.
Which fields are irrigated?
Almost everything.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, there's huge irrigation in around here. So that was a very small investment, I think it was, I think it was like 5,000, and that should recoup itself in two years in the water costs and just, you know, better fields all around.
So if it rains, the sprinklers know not to turn on?
Yeah, through some of the weather sites out there, it sends out a signal. We've always had rain sensors, but they always break, we hit them with a lawnmower, no one ever fixes them, that kind of thing. But this is all web-based, it's all wireless, and they're almost all installed already. And so the weather system sends out a message saying, you know, humidity is going to be X for your area.
Yep.
Don't water. But then again, we'll have control on our phones, so if someone's on the field, it's not supposed to be there, we turn the sprinklers on. You know, so it's a little motivational.
And as they run away, the cameras will be able to...
We keep doing every other section of sprinklers as they go, so they're thoroughly wet. So we'll have fun with that.
21st century Clinton, all right.
So, you know, a little, you know, inexpensive technology will go help us a long way, and another thing I'm investigating is free use of a robotic line painter for the fields this year. And so free Casey up from having to paint the lines all the time, and you just have the thing out at night, put the paint in, it come back, everything's all done.
Wow. And you can set it for whatever dimensions or fields?
Football, soccer, yeah, it knows, yeah, it's all GPS controlled, computer-controlled. So if we like it, if I can get it, and if we like it the following year, it'll be like a $7,000 lease for 10 months. But we spend more than that on manpower painting fields every year.
Right. And so you have a trial period that's no cost or low cost?
Right, no cost. And also, you know...
Other than paint or lime or...
No, nothing, no, no cost for the first year. And then actually, when you do the, when you do the program, the paint's included and all that as well. I mean, it's a good deal, if it works for us, see how it goes.
Who monitors that, that robot at nighttime?
Yeah.
You see someone turns it just a little bit?
You typically wouldn't run it at nighttime just because of that, you know, you do it during the day, so when there's someone around, but I, you know, I'd like to say you run it at night and it's going around the field beeping all night long. I wouldn't do it at night.
Just try to be optimistic.
Yeah. I don't think we have any, we have no problems in a town like that.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Was there anything else you wanted to add?
Well, we want to talk with the, you know...
Statement of interest.
Yeah, we want to talk with the statement of interest of the middle school. Steve and I have had many conversations about which way to go, if you want to go for the rapid repair, if you want to go for, continue on our path. Because as you know, the middle school needs a little bit more money than we, we're hoping we had to spend on it. The accelerated repair program, because it was so popular in the last couple of years, they made it harder to get into it. So they added years to, like, the existing condition, so we don't meet the timeframe for the roof, we don't meet the timeframe for the boilers, we don't meet the timeframe for the windows. So we aren't able to do the accelerated repair. So we're going to continue on with the core repair program, which was our original focus, which may end up in a renovated school, renovated with additions, or a brand-new school. No one knows, the feasibility study is done down the road.
So the, so just to, everyone's aware, they have two separate programs, accelerated repair program. The way the accelerated repair program works is basically you're saying that our building is fine, except for the heating system, the roof, and the exterior doors and windows. And then, so one of the concerns with that is if you get into that program and you, you basically sign off that everything is fine, and then they come do that, that's about all you're going to get from the MSBA for that building for 20 years.
20 years.
So I don't really think it necessarily met our needs, but we did want to, we're talking about looking at the possibility of it, and we're looking at some of the roofing costs and that kind of stuff. But then, as we, as Russ explained, we don't even really qualify now because it kind of raised that threshold, because they're really trying to get the neediest buildings. So, but we still certainly meet the threshold for the core program. And the core program is basically that traditional, more traditional program where they come out, they do a feasibility study, it's a couple, a couple-step process. You do a feasibility study...
Yeah, we pay for that.
We pay for that, yeah, we pay for a feasibility study. And then, based on what the feasibility study says, we can select an option to go forward, like you mentioned, whether it's renovation, new building, additions, those types of things. Same thing we, we applied for last year, and then they came in to the visit, and they did, they did encourage us to apply again this year. There is a motion in your packet, you can see it's in the box there. It's kind of long, but that's the wording that they, they like, this is their template. So if, if the school committee wants to, if you guys feel so moved as to authorize us to do another statement of interest this year, if you want to take a motion, vote now, you could do that, and then we can get going on it. And then I did talk to, I met with Mike Ward today, and talked about trying to get on the selectman meeting agenda, because we would need to also get selectman approval for this as well, because they, they don't want to, they don't want to approve a project that the selectmen, you know, if you're not on the same page.
Sure.
And it was approved by both boards last year, and I think the deadline is April, it's March 15?
April, it's April 12.
April 12, okay, all right, it's a little further up.
And it's easy, it's nice because the way their system works, everything, you know, Russ did a ton of work for this last year, but that stuff's all pre-populated, so at this point, it's really just tweaking it, adding some new things, increasing the age, it's all, it's all in there now.
Right. And the thing with the issue is that this makes, takes us to a five or six-year timeframe in the existing middle school. And, you know, there's been a lot of people commenting on condition over there, and we really have to address it, which comes to the roof. We got to do something with that roof.
Do we have any leaks at this point?
Excuse me?
Do we have any leaks at this point?
Yeah, the leaks are a lot less because we've done a lot of work on it, but they're, they're still up there. And as I brought to you guys before, is, and I have new numbers from last week, there's a bunch of options we can take. What we did for that small section, it was really bad, we did the fluid-applied coating, which has been for about two or three months, and that solved a lot of the problems in that area. Not all of them, because a lot of stuff migrates, because our roof, the roof we have now is actually on top of the original roof. We had a double-layer roof. So to do the rest of that roof with the same fluid-applied coating is about, the same as they had before, 400 to 600,000. And we would have to go out to bid and to get that project in. And that's about a six-year to 10-year solution. I mean, so that's kind of close, but it's viable.
Is there a warranty on that?
Yeah, you can get a warranty with 10 years on it.
It's 10-year warranty?
Yeah, you can get a 10-year warranty on the product, so...
I'm sorry, but forgive me if I'm wrong, I think I have this right, that the MSBA wants to see a steady commitment to the existing buildings. I mean, yes, it's an investment, however short-term, but it's still an investment that's favorable to acceptance of a project?
That's correct.
Do I have that right?
That's correct. You know, and, and this option, it's the lowest-cost option I could find. You know, if we're at a four, five, six-year, it's $100,000 a year, and, you know, I don't know what happens if we don't do this. You know, we can have people on a roof, and we could spend this much money just fixing, fixing what we, chasing it. If we go up and do whole-scale coating with this product, we pretty much seal that roof like a drum, for the, up to, you know, six years, 10 years on the warranty side.
I think that's, that's the difficult part with this, is that you realize that, you know, even though we want to pursue the, the core repair program, first of all, you know, we didn't get in this year. It's not really a guarantee we're getting in next year, and even if we did get in next year, it's like a five-year process from that point.
Sure.
So we still need to, you know, we still need to, to realize that that building's still necessary, and that we need to, we need to take care of it along the way.
Right, so we're looking at best-case scenario, at this stage of the game, probably six years out, if we were approved this go-around for the new building.
Yeah.
And so what you're explaining to us is that's going to cover us with a warranty in hand for the six years that we need.
Right. Yep, and even if it got delayed a year or two, it probably is going to be able to get us to eight or 10, if it takes a little while.
Yeah, and once you put this product on the roof, like I said, this is stuff, I use this a lot out in the western, in the southwest. You can go back up and get buckets of this stuff and toss it around, and find where your problem areas are, and get some guys up on the roof. So it's not something that, you know, isn't serviceable after the fact.
Okay.
So it, it's a logical thing, because the total rip and replace for a totally new roof is about 2.5 million.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem practical if you've got a solution that's a fraction of that.
It doesn't pass any sniff test.
So do we need a vote on that?
I think, so we need to entertain a motion to, so if we approve the motion, then we'll discuss the SOI and where we go from there. So we'll just, we'll make a motion right now, entertain a motion to accept the, to start the discussion for a statement of interest.
I'll make a motion, okay. Now Tina, you go.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion.
So I think I remember this from the meeting we had, I just, you know, I think it's important to make it kind of public knowledge. So when we go forward with this motion, we don't have to commit, are we going to go for renovation, are we going for a new building? We're going forward to get approved for a project, and then we can make the decision with our feasibility study.
Correct. Yep. And it doesn't even, this is really, just like it's non-binding that it doesn't guarantee the MSBA is giving us anything, it's non-binding that we don't even have to accept it if they do invite us, if for some reason something changed, drastic change.
So even if there's a difference of opinion with the public, as far as new or renovation, this still covers both parties.
Correct, right. I think that's the cart before the horse. Right now, we're just, we're letting the MSBA know formally, as a, as a board, that we would like to express our interest.
But I think it's a, it's a good clarification. It's not we're going for just a renovation, or we're going for a new building. We're going as part of their core program, which encompasses both.
That's how I understood it, I just wanted to clarify.
No, I appreciate it.
No, that's a good, yeah.
Yep, appreciate it. Any other discussion?
So, just the timeline on this, so we'll make a motion and hopefully, you know, go forward with this tonight, and then when do they decide again, was that April?
It's like December was when they're, when they meet. So this doesn't close till April, and then if they need to do any site visits or that kind of stuff, they'll do it over the, in the fall, like they did for ours.
So it'll be just before that?
It'll be, it'll be right around, I think it was around Thanksgiving time that we would get, we'd notification.
Thank you.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments? All right. Do, do I need to read the entire motion?
I think we could probably make, if you'd like, or you could probably just make a motion to, as presented on the text, it's up to you.
Okay, so, "Having convened in an open meeting on February 11th, 2019, prior to the closing date, the School Committee of Clinton, Massachusetts, in accordance with date, the School Committee of Clinton, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated prior to the April 12th, 2019 closing for the Clinton Middle School located at 100 West Boylston Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the MSBA in the future for the replacement, renovation, or modernization of the school facility systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility, and replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Clinton to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Well, that's clear. All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous.
I don't think, did we make a motion?
We did. We made a motion to approve the Statement of Interest, then we discussed it, and then I read it.
Okay. All right. I thought the first motion was, I thought I heard something different. Okay.
We just, we discuss after the motions. We're supposed to discuss after the motions.
We don't necessarily always. All right. So, so we're working on that and make sure we get that submitted by the deadline.
Right. And just to go on back into the fields now, you guys, over on the, on the veterans' field, you know where we have this, the football field here by the road? It's, it's really wet and in bad shape.
The JV field?
Yeah, the JV field. So, if you look, if you look at the triangle area, what all the growth is, and you see the original part, the original plan, there's a small detention basin over there. And what I think has happened is, that has never been maintained, and so all that tree growth is now cut into the field and has raised the elevation, so the water can't drain away. So, I just want to let you know, I'm going to go to the Conservation Commission for approval to go and cut all that back and regrade that soil, so it's going to get the surface drainage working. If we can't get the surface drainage working, we're going to have to put in some kind of drainage structure over there at some cost in the future. Because right now, that field's pretty in bad shape.
Right. And I'm assuming that would not only help the, the rectangular JV field, but the softball field as well?
Yeah, it would help everything over in that corner, because it's, it's locked in because it's just the way it was cut out. So, is, and, the slope is so very minimal, I'm sure that, you know, that's what's causing all the root upgrowth from all that wooded area. So we're going to get that all taken care of, get a, see what's else going to take.
That's great. You don't need our approval.
No, I just, I'm just letting you know, I'm just letting you know, so I'm going to look at, see it in the paper, or you get a piece of paper across your desk. You know what it is.
You wonder why someone's cutting down a bunch of trees.
But we're also cutting a bunch of trees around the admin building too, so you know about that. We've had some trees fall on property, and that's our properties. We have to, we have a quota to have that taken out, and one of these, one Saturday, we'll have someone in there and it's going to take out most of the trees over there. They're mostly dead anyways at this point.
I actually had a question unrelated to what you are presenting tonight. Is everybody else set?
Go ahead.
So, I just have the opportunity to walk over at the end of the parking lot where the football fields are, and notice that the pot area is pretty untidy. I don't know if.
Which way?
At the end of the football field parking lot.
Yeah, that's, that, that's an ongoing issue. I've had conversations with the superintendent about that. At some point in the future, we're going to need more storage space, and it goes to other problems that have happened, or concern over there. Is, that'd be an excellent location to put the maintenance facility, take the maintenance facility out of the fieldhouse, make the, turn the fieldhouse garages into team locker rooms. It's supposed to be in a fieldhouse. Separate that use, right now, they have that, they use that for locker rooms now, there's chemicals and cleaning and tools and oils, and it'd be a low-cost thing to switch that over into a locker room situation, a team room situation, and little money to put up a metal building down there, other garages in it.
That would have enough storage to store whatever we have in the pots?
Right. And, and at that point, we'd have a better handle on what everyone needs, and there'd be interior storage dedicated to everybody, which would be managed by facilities, so everyone can keep it nice and clean.
In the meantime, though, if, if we happen to have a dumpster, if we're, we're getting a dumpster for another reason, I feel like there's a lot of, a lot of debris, a lot of stuff that's been thrown over there, and I, and I don't even know if it belongs to the school department because it's accessible to the public at any time. It's, it almost looks like a dumping ground over there right now.
Yeah, a lot of the sports teams have, the sports teams are, or sports agencies have stuff, and they just toss and stuff. So if we can get in touch with them, send them a letter, let them know, clean up the area or anything, it's not there by X date, we're going to toss it.
We can at least take a look down there, and if there's like pallets or something like that that we can just get rid of.
Yeah, I think it was, and this was me, actually. I think there was, wasn't there like roofing?
There was tents.
There was like broken tents.
Like, like the frame that, you know, from maybe one of those.
Like a track meet or something. They set up a tent, it breaks, and they just toss it.
And then broke, and they just put it over there. But then, wasn't there like roofing tiles?
Yeah.
Shingles and stuff.
None of that stuff that we saw, I don't think was like, was storage stuff. It was clearly something, yeah.
No, it was, right.
Yeah, we can go over there and tidy that up.
Yeah.
We do own that pile of dirt, though.
That was a, they used that for the, the snow farm, the storm, about what, five years ago? And the, so the tower's just dumping all the snow, and they want it melted off.
Oh, that stuff was leftover?
Yeah, that's what it was. That's what a lot of it was.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I can imagine that.
That's my first winter back here, so I can remember. No, they just dumped, it was just big piles of snow, and it melted, that's where all that.
There was debris in the snow?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what happened in Boston that year, when they had to transport the snow offsite and it melted in like April or whatever.
Yeah, oh, that could be.
Yeah, we, we can just get that stuff. We're having dumpsters down at the elementary school, we can do transport some stuff this week.
All right.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Russ.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. So we're going to do a quick update on the FY19 budget. So Karen will start with sort of just our second quarter update. So our second quarter would have been right around the, the new year, and then, you know, by the time we process the warrants, so kind of, probably a couple warrants past the actual second quarter, but these should be a good snapshot of where we were.
Yeah. The, the update is through expenditures of January 10th. So the year-to-date expenditures as of January 10th were $9,272,876 of the total budget of $22,817,623. We spent 41% of the budget. The year-to-date encumbered expenditure is $13,252,722. So if I include the encumbered, the budget balance would be $292,26.
$292,000.
The FY19 anticipated circuit breaker adjustment is $817,976. So if we include that adjustment, then the budget balance would actually be $1,110,000.
Sorry to interrupt you. Are you on a specific page?
No, I'm just giving you the balance right now.
She's, she's reading the, the.
Page four. The balance. Page four.
Page four.
Yeah, page, the fourth page, that's the bottom of the line.
Thank you.
And there's that yellow box there. That kind of shows that number. So, the, the general fund is $292,000. The $817,976, that's the circuit breaker that we basically have to apply this year because you have one year to use it. So we just haven't charged things over to circuit breaker yet. Once we do that, so basically, we're in a situation where right now, we have basically $1.1 million that is not spent or encumbered at this point.
All right. Can I ask a question about circuit breaker? Am I misremembering, or is that more than we had anticipated?
The amount that we have right now?
The FY19 anticipated circuit breaker adjustment?
It came in higher.
It did.
I think it came in higher than.
I mean, for some reason, I thought I had sort of mid-700 in my.
I don't remember if there was an adjustment to that or not, but I think, I know that we.
We have to spend, second year we have to spend.
This is based on what we got last year, so we have to spend it this year, but, yeah.
And our, the state reimbursement was about 2% higher than.
Than it was originally in the budget process, right?
So there was a little plan.
But I think what's also, that also is applying, so part of it is, we're kind of a year behind on circuit breaker, so part of it is too, we're getting a higher reimbursement rate right now. So this is, this is our FY19 circuit breaker that we're going to apply is really the reimbursement based on our FY18, so.
Yeah, we got 72%.
Yeah.
Were you planning for, I think 70?
Yeah. 72%.
I guess before that was 68, right?
Yeah. I think that's what's funded up right now in the governor's proposal, and they're trying to see if they can get that higher.
I think it was 68 to 70 they're anticipating. So that's where we are as of January 10th with the $1 million with the encumbered. There are a couple of areas that I just wanted to note that are a little high. The sped contracted medical and therapeutic services, that's where I've been trying to really track that this year. We have contracted services for PT, the PT assistant, orientation mobility, BCBA, the psychologist, alternative, in an alternative classroom. So right now, the estimate is to be over budget in that category by $106,341. However, we did budget $49,604 for a BCBA, which we ended up going outside contracted services for that. So if I include that, $49,604, then as of right now, the estimate is to be over in that category by $56,737.
So there's about five schools that are up in front of getting state approval for increase. Are we planning for any of that impact?
For, for what? Excuse me?
So, some of the, out of district placements that we have, they're looking at getting permission to increase their salaries or their tuition by seven to like 30%. So are you looking into that to see the impact of that?
I don't.
For this fiscal year or for next fiscal year?
Coming up.
For, for FY20?
For, for this fiscal year.
Oh, right now? Do it right now?
So I just, you know, if you take a look at that.
How many schools did you say there was?
There's about five schools that are trying to get permission.
To increase right now?
Yeah. They're coming up.
Oh, you mean they're in on the OC, OSD to get.
They're looking to get permission above the OSD.
Oh, okay. No, I have not heard anything about that.
So if we can just, okay, to see if we have an impact there.
You mean they already have their paperwork in for a rate change?
They've been probably setting an alert of it potentially happening, but they're, in the next week or two, they're, they're going in for approval.
Okay. Yeah. Because I, in my past, I have done that rate change. I know it takes a few years. I don't know if they were in the end stage, is that what you mean?
I was looking through our list. I don't know if we have any schools, but just if we do a double check.
Yeah, I'll make that up.
Yep.
I'll get that to you on that. The vocational tuition, I just wanted to note, we're a little high on that one. Excuse me. On the vocational tuition, we're over by $33,652. The vocational transportation over by $34,200. We have that additional Norfolk Aggie student that moved in, and we have 109 ASVET students. So we did get, we had a break on ASVET tuition, which did help. The repairs and maintenance of buildings continues to be over and high for us. It's over right now by $106,152. Again, there's a lot of HVAC repairs, but I'm going to refer that to Director of Facilities. There's a lot of different repairs there, but get the HVAC. I know that you've had discussion.
And there, there are also some things in that line that we might be able to, that we need to just reassess on, like the warrant that was approved and, last year, and also we, remember when we budgeted, we, we budgeted using some money from rental facilities, so there might be some recoding that can possibly happen for those expenditures, but a lot of them have been more of an emergency nature where we had to just get it fixed and charge it to the general fund, and then we'll decode as necessary.
I was just going to note that the rental of facilities currently, we have $88,000 there, and we haven't, we haven't recoded anything on there, so we still have that $88,000 to fall back on. The one thing on that rental of facilities, I am holding some money because we have the new cleaning company at the main office, I am holding a little bit of money on that one. But I still expect the repairs and maintenance of buildings revolving account to have, at the end of the year, my estimate is if we don't decode anything, it's about $114,000, but as of right now, it's about 88. I do have your expenditures broken down by school. I have the elementary, middle school, high school.
And just, just one note, if you do look at it by school, the elementary school might show a year-to-date balance of negative $26,000, while the middle school shows a positive balance of $47,000. But when we created the budget, like supplies for fourth grade and that, were, were still left in the middle school coding. So there's, so even though we've been charging those actual expenses to the right account, the budget, the budgeted amounts a little off.
After you go through the, after the athletics breakdown, you'll come to circuit breaker, which is. So we began the year with a balance of $817,975, then the circuit breaker, and estimated to receive $672,263 with a year-end balance of, six, the year-end balance of 672,263. The number of sped students I have as of this report is 36. However, there's one residential student who's just aging out, so that'll bring us on to 35. There was a couple of students at my last review that were out on 45-day placement, so I'm kind of monitoring, monitoring on whether I have to adjust my encumbrances for that.
And that's where you have the diagnostic setting number?
Yeah. We haven't used any money, any of that money yet, so I still have, it's like $60,000 in that account. So, right now, I think there's two kids out on that, so let's be monitoring that. On the next page, school choice. We began the year with $327,98 in school choice. I'm expected to receive $517,415 from the state, but that doesn't include our sped adjustment, which we should get at the end of the year. So, the budgeted salaries that we've budgeted are $624,745. So if all stays the same, it would be an ending balance of $188,626, which is still on track with our FY20 budget, because we have, in FY20 budget, we have $634,665. So if we add the money that we're going to get in next year with that ending balance of $188, we should be okay as of right now.
And as we mentioned, that doesn't include our year-end special ed adjustment, which I think last year was almost, it was like $89,000 or something like that.
And then the current school choice count is 82, which is up over, last year it was getting low, but it seems to be going up a little.
And we've, you know, that, that's considered revolving account, right? So we've tried to pull away when possible salaries that are tied to that?
Yeah, we haven't, the only additional salaries we put was the, the new program at the high school. We put that on.
Yeah, technically for, for coding to it, I mean, you know, what you code to it versus what, you know, what would have to be cut if that money weren't there, are kind of sometimes two different things. But, you know, some of the new, fairly the only things we've really added into it this year, we added like the AD salary, we added the alternative program, SRO money, so some of those new things that we've added. But doesn't mean that, you know, if we, if we had to all of a sudden, you know, if there was less school choice, we'd have to necessarily cut those things, but that's where we, we put them when we're adding them.
We have eight teachers in there right now. It was less than we had in the past.
Right. But I, I think to Dr. Meyer's point, that we're taking a practical approach in terms of, you know, not knowing if that money's always going to, whether the delta's going to flip, and then that impacts, we don't want it to be direct services to students and especially classroom teachers.
Right. Yeah, we, we haven't changed the teachers, just adding that alternative program. And I actually think we were, it was kind of like the new things we're putting there, but.
Yeah, there's a couple. But like you said, I mean, it's, it's, it's not like those things, it's kind of where Yeah, there's a couple, but like you said, I mean, it's, it's, it's not like those things, it's kinda where we put some of those things that we're trying out as we kinda see and then. But doesn't mean that, you know, all of a sudden, if we had slightly less school choice, we necessarily have to cut from that area.
Right.
I mean, things can get reassessed in the budget.
I think it's a clarification question on the school choice. How much money do we get per student that choice is in? God, you had to ask me that.
Forget if it's fifty-five hundred or is it five grand right now?
I think it's a fifty-five hundred.
It's fifty-five.
That's what I thought it was, but it wasn't.
Yeah. And then that's, and then you get a, then at the end, you do the special ed adjustment. So, if there's a student who, you know, was a special education student who had additional services that were required, we can put a claim in for that.
But if we had a student in district, we're spending about thirteen on the in-district student.
Correct.
But rolling in reimbursed about five for a school choice student.
So, that's why, that's why they really say, school choice isn't really supposed to be like a moneymaker. It's, it's like if you have the space available, filling it with those slots helps you. But it usually doesn't make sense to, you know, fund an entire section, you know, if you get twenty kids in one grade, and now it means I have to add another teacher for, it doesn't really make sense.
It helps to round it out, but not to-
Correct. And there's some districts out, you know, when I was more in the Western Mass world, there were some small towns that were, that were, you know, trying to keep their schools open by school choice, and then they were finding out that it just really, it's not really sustainable. Cause exactly what you said, your average per pupil expenditure is gonna be, you know, twelve, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars, and you're getting fifty-five hundred for them.
I did analysis the first year I was here, though, on that, because there are a lot of expenses that are gonna be fixed, no matter how many students you have.
No, I understand.
So, I mean, it definitely isn't a moneymaker, but you-
No, I understand. You know, and what you're saying is that you might, fifteen students in the classroom is, you know, where you're at a break-even point. And then you put another five students, and that's where you're seeing the profit.
So, that's why, you know, you would open up certain classrooms and not other classrooms.
Right.
So.
Thank you for that clarification.
The grant summary is next. So, the only thing about the grant I was gonna say is how much we've got in this year, which is one million, thirty-six thousand, one sixty-seven. Some of the expenses that we have been able to get with the grants were teachers, IAs, professional development. We also have the BC, some of the BCBA contracted services in there. Does anybody have any questions on the grants?
There's only one grant that I know we haven't really spent much of yet. If you see the Perkins Grant. We haven't really spent anything this year, and that's because we're just waiting for, we just got, the other day, I just got access to the draft report from our Perkins tiered focus monitoring. So, we were waiting back for that to see what action we might need to take with that grant, if we need to amend it or anything. So, we will put our, once we have that direction.
We've been doing pretty good on spending them all down every year, kinda monitoring through the year. The next is the revolving summary. I just had a couple of notes on that one. The preschool tuition currently has a balance of one forty-nine, four ninety-one. However, the projected ending balance at this time is one twenty-nine, three fifty-four, which is just about enough to cover the FY twenty, FY twenty salaries that we've budgeted for. So, it's kinda in line with what we've been doing in the past is using the money that we had before for the next year.
We did increase that spending a little bit in that account this year, so that we could add the, part of the secretary of health in the special ed office, cause part of her job description is handling the-
Preschool.
Preschool billing.
Billing. There's one teacher and two IAs that are paid out of that account. The athletic revolving currently has a balance of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred, and about fourteen thousand, three oh one of the revenue has been added into this account, mostly from game receipts and donations, since we don't have the fees this year. And we have not even spent very much of that this year, so John still has some money in there that if he needs to dig into it by the end of the year, he can. We try to hold it out until we deplete all the general fund money.
Was that concluding the thirty, was it thirty thousand we had for the new sport? Is that included in that amount?
No, that was in the general fund.
General fund.
Yeah. So, this is just his revolving account. So, we didn't budget anything to come out of the revolving account this year, because we knew, we knew we weren't gonna get the user fees, which was the primary, primary source of revenue for that account. So, really, that money is just kinda sitting there for, you know, when the sucker goals break or something like that. You could just go and buy one, and it wasn't gonna break the bank. So, now that we have a better sense, and now that we know pretty much we've got about fourteen thousand in revenue, when we go through our next budget revision, even for next year, we might try to take certain things, you know, might look at certain uniforms or something that were on the wish list and say, okay, why don't you spend about that fourteen or so thousand dollars at least and get those, and then we can get that out of that, the general fund for next year. And that way, we're not, cause we don't want everyone really wanna complete, deplete athletic revolving completely, cause it's one of those things that, you know, team makes it deep in the tournament, or you're paying for buses, or, you know, those unanticipated expenses that you wanna be able to cover. But it's also, you know, the revolving accounts aren't supposed to be savings accounts, you know, it's not, we're just trying to, you know, we wanna, we wanna be spending what we're taking in to give back to the program.
Nice.
And again, John, he's been doing really a great job this year, and he's been, I mean, he certainly has enough in his general fund. We've been talking to do his spring sports, so I don't think he's gonna have to dig in too much into this, or which would be nice to be able to get some, like he said, some of the wish lists. The next page, next three pages is the student activity for elementary, middle, and high school. The elementary school, I just wanted to note that we were going to close that account, but the auditors have decided against it, and they have decided that they're gonna, that it is best to keep it open for the field trips for the elementary school. So, we're not gonna be closing that account. We'll be keeping that open. The high school, with the exception of the class of two thousand and eighteen, all the past senior classes have transferred their remaining balances to their own bank accounts, which is nice. They've all got a little bit of money to, for themselves, maybe have some reunions. And we're currently working on getting the class of two thousand and eighteen to transfer their monies, cause they have till the end of this fiscal year. So, be working on that. The capital improvement article, as of this report, there hasn't been any money spent on that. It's a hundred and forty thousand. However, as Dr. Meyer noted earlier, there's been some signed contracts for the security cameras at the high school in the field house, and they totaled thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty.
And also, part of that was for the HVAC repairs, so some of those repairs that we had to make might get coded over to that.
The textbook technology article, as of this report, is a balance of twenty-three thousand, seven fifty-six in there. However, we've been in the process of ordering more technology, so we'll probably be depleting that pretty soon, the twenty-three thousand, seven fifty-six.
And what we're able-
We've got some more Chromebooks.
And some of the things that we're able to order with that now, that we're using now, are also things that we'll, might be able to take out of the FY twenty budget as well. So, there's some things that we'll, some adjustments we'll make as we do that.
We did do a little, some more expenditures in daycare as well. We've got some Chromebooks for daycare, and today there was, they got some expenses down there, some different supplies and for daycare, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I don't know, Karen, if you wanna stay up there for a minute, we'll have a food service director, Mr. Van Ass, come on up. We just wanted to give you an overview of where we stand with food services right now. This is really more to look at like the meal counts and where we are with that. As far as like the unpaid lunch balance issue, you know, we sent letters from my office, I think they went out January eighth. We gave those people till I think February eighth, or whatever, right around there, I think it was Friday, was when they were supposed to respond by. So, I know that we were getting a report today, so that we could start comparing to see, you know, who we have that we know responded to us, who we can see has made substantial payments, and then we'll be following up with that. So, you know, we have, we are working to address that issue as well, but that's not really the purpose of this update. This is just really to kinda go through more of some of our budgets, meal counts, that kinda stuff, so, Mr. Van Ass.
The budget that I received from Karen shows a deficit of almost twenty thousand dollars. That's projected deficit. It's my responsibility as food service director to come up with a corrective action plan for the lower-performing areas of our, of the budget. So, with that being said, there's areas where we can improve on, such as, if you look, the labor cost. What I have, what I have done so far for the labor costs is when I'm replacing full-time staff, trying to give them less hours, not full-time, and also have them commuting from school to school, which would help save on labor cost. With that being said, the cost of health insurance and life insurance has gone up, and if I can keep them under twenty hours, that would save on the labor hours. Another area that I found that we need improvement on is the snacks at the middle school. I did stop the snacks. I think that it would be a wise decision to bring that, the snacks back to middle school, to bring in more revenue. And the reason why we did stop the snacks is that I was looking, you know, out for the wellness of each student to make sure that they're eating their lunch, instead of just purchasing snacks. But I found that I think that we should go back to purchasing snacks and start offering the A-list snacks to bring in more revenue. What I like to do also is maybe create a survey for the students to see, you know, what they want and like, you know, on the A-list. Because your hands are tied with the, you know, the new regulations and everything like that, it's, you know, it's only so, there's just really not much you can do. You have to go by the regulations in the USDA. So, that's another area that I wanna improve on. The count for lunch. You see, it's right here. Lunches have stayed pretty much steady, and they've, they've gone up, but the breakfast is another issue. And what I thought was a good idea would be to, working with the administration and everything, is maybe in the future, offer breakfast in the classroom. I think that would be a good idea to bring up participation with breakfast. As of right now, I find that there isn't enough time for students to enjoy breakfast. I think they have like ten minutes. It's really not enough time, so that's just something that, you know, we're thinking about, I'm thinking about doing, so. Other than that, I don't know if you have any questions besides ideas.
So, Karen, when you, if we compare, I don't have last year's in front of me, but do you have, do you know what the reason, the actual reason for the deficit is? Are we serving less lunches, or?
No, lunches, the lunches are not-
The lunches went up.
Yeah, lunches have gone up.
Did we lose money last year?
Yes.
Oh, we did. Oh, okay, okay.
So, typically, what has been, what it looks like has been happening in the last few years is that there's been sort of these losses at the end of the year, but there's always been basically a balance in the lunch revolving account. So, it's, so even though the snapshot of one fiscal year is operating at a loss, you weren't at a loss overall. Unfortunately, we're kinda getting to the point of the, the end of that revolving account. So, so that's why we're trying to, you know, look at this now and make sure that we're making the necessary adjustments to, you know, try to make sure that we minimize any losses in the food service program. One thing we did do, we moved Nan. So, Nan's office was in the middle school. We moved her office down to central office, so her office is now right next to Karen. So, we kinda have all our, our business people, kind of Annette, Nan, and Karen all in a row there, so that we can kinda really, you know, stay on top of the numbers and make sure that we're looking at those. And like I said, my office is now, we're getting a more active role in looking at the unpaid lunch balances and try to make sure we recoup that money as well, so. So, I think we'll, you know.
I mean, we all know the cost of food. It doesn't go down. And then, of course, I mean, I don't, are we at the point where we need to raise lunch prices to make up, or?
Well, we, yeah, we did that two years, last year?
I'm pretty, I guess, I lost track of the year. I found that a little. I don't know.
What is the cost right now?
Two-
Seventy-five?
Two seventy-five, across the board, yeah.
You know, and I know we talked about this with all the departments, is the cost of health insurance and life insurance, and that, I mean, that's getting everyone in. And I applaud what you're trying to figure out a way to save it. You think, you know, I know he's trying to get someone, if you have, what, under, was it twenty hours a week? Or eighteen, but is it gonna be harder to find, and I don't, I don't even really need an answer, just a kind of a thought. And it'd be great if he can-
It's not easy. Like I said, we, you know, I'm kinda shift-
Yeah, often someone part-time where they don't get any benefits, vice, full-time is probably harder to get. And the second part, I'll tell you, my son is pumped you're gonna bring the snacks back. I haven't told him that yet, but I hope he's watching, you know? You lost a lot of friends in the seventh day of the grade.
Well, all the income that we get from the vending machines, aren't those snack items that are in the vending machines? Are those at all the schools, or just?
Middle and-
I know I've seen one at the middle. Oh, okay. So, they did have snacks available to them?
Yeah. Well, at the elementary, we have snacks, more of just like a yogurt, a water, and fruit, you know, just to keep it basic and, you know, not offering something. But at the middle school, we did have a pretty big selection.
I would think the Doritos might be a bigger seller than the yogurt, maybe, but-
They don't let that happen.
You really have to be careful.
The french fries used to be a big moneymaker, too.
As we all know, if you go way back, I mean, the stuff, you know, the things that we used to serve.
Kinda thought you better-
If we could still do that, you know, we wouldn't be, you know, sitting here talking about it.
I think it's, it's been really good having Nan there. I mean, she's only been, like, what, we can have two weeks now. And we're, today, we're, you know, looking in to try to find some more reports coming off our first food service financial package and called up to see if maybe looking in to get an upgrade, to get better reports from there, which might help us to, you know, analyze it a little bit more.
And we also had the food service department review this year, so we've been-
The reviews coming up.
Yeah, the reviews coming up with some documentation.
Yep, the end of the week.
So, I think that'll-
No, we always, the food service department's always been self-sustained, too, you know? So, it's, we're doing our best, but we can make changes, and I think, you know, start with, you know, the areas that are needed, like the breakfast. It's down, so.
Maybe you can build that up.
And, you know, with, it's gotta be a team effort, you know, work with the administration and try to figure it out. It's just something you cannot jump into. You gotta think about custodians, how you're gonna get up to the classrooms. But there are schools that are doing that, and I just think that that would bring up the participation, you know, big time, really.
And that, and then obviously, because there's not, the, the labor's already there, so the more meals you can sell, the more it's gonna recoup.
Getting up there, cleaning up, and, you know, so it just has to really, like I said, be a team effort. We all have to sit down and talk, but it just, they don't have enough time right now. Buses, sometimes the buses are late or something, you know, just to get in there, it's just, there's some schools that are doing it now.
And when I did look into it, it is true that with some of the changes he's made with the substitutes, that his labor costs are down. So, it would've been more if he hadn't done some substitutes, a couple of retirees, so. It probably would've been up another fifteen to twenty thousand over that.
Because the, the health insurance is coming out of the food service department budget.
So, when we looked at the numbers last year, there was a deficit. And because of the deficit last year, we raised the amount of money, right, to offset the deficit, hoping not to have a deficit this year. So, we're coming in with another twenty-eight thousand dollar deficit off of raising the numbers. You mentioned the part about breakfast. Where else are we getting hit besides the health insurance piece?
The labor, which I mentioned.
Right, so you've made adjustments, though, to cut down on the labor expense, right?
Just recently, with the new hires.
Okay.
To try to keep it under the twenty hours, so we don't have to come up with the health insurance and-
So, the three areas that you feel like you're being impacted by is the breakfasts, the health insurance?
And snacks.
And the snacks, yeah. The la carte, the la carte sales is down.
Was the snack piece included last year, or was it cut the year before that?
No, we did have snacks last year.
Yeah.
You did have it last year. So, this is the first impact of that?
Yeah. So, our la carte sales this year compared to last year are down.
Okay, so this is the first time we're seeing that impact? Okay, thank you.
But I think you really have to look at that from a cost analysis standpoint to see, whatever the deficit was, did we actually, when we raised it, I think we just tried to raise it the most, the minimal amount, you know? Whereas, did we actually do a cost analysis and say, we're at a deficit of twenty thousand, divide that amongst the amount of meals we serve, and if we raise the lunch prices by this amount, it should cover that. I don't think we really did that. I think we just arbitrarily came up with a number to say, you know, we didn't wanna increase it by more than a dime or a quarter, or whatever it was.
But I think, and I think that's part of, you know, now that we have, you know, Nan and Karen's office so close to each other, and now that's, you know, so now Dave's down in that office, and then we can, are coming into that office. So, we can try to make sure that as we're going forward, as we look at like the summer, if we need to make adjustments, so like you said, if we need to make meal price adjustments, it's not just gonna be because they're saying we're not at the minimum meal spending like it almost was last time. It's gonna be, you know, we've done the math, and we need to charge two ninety-two a meal to break even, so we're gonna, yeah.
Yeah.
I think participation is definitely a big factor in this. You know, breakfast, analyze, there can definitely be improvement involved.
You might not have an answer to my question now, but if we can just look into it. I know that from talking to Dr. Myers, we had a reduction in the amount of families that are eligible now for free and reduced. Is, are we seeing an impact there to the bottom line as well?
With the free and reduced numbers down?
Can we take a look to see how much of an impact that's happened on us as well? Because I know that when we're looking at different items in different areas where we might be eligible for reimbursement, our percentages, like you shared with me, had gone down.
Right.
So, we're no longer eligible, so I'm wondering, is that a double impact that we're seeing? So we're no longer eligible, so I'm wondering, is that a double impact that we're seeing?
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm glad to have Nan down, because what, now, it's at the point, in my opinion, that you really have to get into more analysis of, okay, where it is. Because it's, I just don't think raising the lunch pro price is going to.
It's not.
It's not going to cure this problem.
I feel like there, it's somewhere else.
Right.
And I know from hearing firsthand from Dr. Myers and yourself, that we have a reduction in the amount of families that are now putting in to get, you know, free or reduced items.
Right.
And I wonder if that's another reflection of seeing the financial impact of that.
Because with this one here, Nan and I, the first piece we were doing was really getting into the expenses piece. So we ended up doing, you know, a whole spreadsheet on the employees, well, what's the, what's the change now, what do we need to do here? And then, when I was going over with her on the revenue count, the reports that she was pulling off her financial system, I didn't really think they were giving the proper information to do that analysis, which is why we called today to see, well, what, what kind of reports can we get from here? If we can't get the reports that we need, then we're going to have to take a couple other reports and put them together. Because now it's at the point where you really have to analyze, okay, where's your revenue? And you try to, I'd like to do like a five-year, see a five-year and see where the changes were. And then you can really see what your revenue changes are and what areas you need to get into. Because we, I mean, we already know that the cost of labor and the health insurance and all that is something you have to get into. The purchase food, I, unless I see like an analysis of five or six years to see if that cost of the food has been going up.
Well, yeah, healthier food is more expensive, right?
Right. With all those new regulations, I'm sure that.
All the new regulations, it's all, you know, whole grains and stuff like that.
Yep.
So that's what we've been working on. And in the past, like I said, they've never really had that much of a problem because they always had that balance there. So we never had to bail them out until, last year was the first year. And it was a small amount last year. But now, when you're starting out with zero, then, you know, I think there was like 15 to 16 dollars left at the end of FY18.
And, and it's waiting to go, right?
Well, I was, no, I was just curious, the, this 20,000, this negative 20,000, does the negative balances that we've been discussing, does that have anything to do with this or is that?
That would be in addition to this, this doesn't include that.
Okay, okay.
And what would be in addition to that would be new balances from this year, not, not carryover balances from previous years.
You know, and I like the fact that you're strategizing, trying to come up with different ways to try to bring new revenue. Excuse me. As a former coach, I know that the athletes, you know, at the end of the day, always hungry, you want them to eat healthy. I don't know if you can maybe look into exploring something with that as well?
Absolutely, yeah. I'd like to do a survey with them and see what, you know.
Because for your athletes, it's a long day.
It is a long day.
If you can put something healthy into them before they go on their way.
Again, it's all USDA regulations. I mean, the portions gone down and.
But if we can look into something, maybe, you know.
Yep. Makes sense, because we're not, we're not in a situation where they can like walk across the street to a convenience store anyway. So if they're sitting there, they're going to get on a bus to go to a softball game, they could grab some, yeah.
I mean, even a snack period like you and I were talking about, you know, there's a lot.
Well, I mean, there's a benefit to the kids.
I've never been in this situation, so it's, it's something that.
I mean, in the classroom and on the field, there's a benefit to them being fueled, right?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
How did that revolving account build up in the first place? Was it just like profit year after year that it built up? And then, how, how did that, that revolving account come to exist in the first place?
I, I would have to refer that today, because I really don't know how it's been built up, because.
Well, we said, we said that if, in years, if we had, if we were a little short, we could pull from a revolving account that existed for food services, unless I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, that's correct.
So I was just, where did that come from?
So over time.
Was it just something that built up, like year by year?
Yeah, year by year, a little way in, because now if you're, if you're running in the black, you're not touching that. So every year it kind of builds and builds and builds. And then, like I said, it's not, I mean, we can joke about it, but, you know, you did used to be able to sell french fries. And you didn't even be able to sell this, you know, ice creams or what, like all these different things that people were buying, and those were, those a la carte sales were really helping to build those. And then now that a lot of that stuff has changed, there's a lot of stuff that, you know, either it's more expensive snack to sell or it's something.
Maintaining the equipment, the prices, like you said, the food, it's all, it's all gone up.
So those regulations tell us like what, how we have to serve, like the lunch.
The portions, yeah.
The portions. But does it, if we have like an a la carte line, there's no, I mean, we can't.
No, it's not reimbursable. So it's not.
But I mean, there's no, there's no restrictions.
Yes, you still have to, yes, there is.
How, how can you possibly track that?
Exactly, yeah.
Like if a kid eats a lunch and then he goes back into the a la carte line and gets.
Well, no, I mean, we can do that. Like they can buy as much from that a la carte. But we can't, we, but the things we sell in the a la carte line still have to meet certain nutritional guidelines.
Correct. But as far as like what they can buy, like there's, they can go, okay.
It's still regulated, even if it's a la carte.
For nutrition, yeah. Right, but not the, like, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, there's not like a calorie count that they can't go over like.
But I'm assuming that the days of the cheeseburger and fries are gone.
Yeah. Unless they're other big sweet potato fries.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, your a la carte sales has always been fairly good for you, so that has to, we have to find some way to build that back up again and again.
So it's really, like I said, as a food service director, I, I had to say, okay, what am I going to do here? Are we going to serve snacks and have them just keep on purchasing snacks and not eat their lunch? You know, you're looking out for the wellness of the student. It's not working out that way, so. And, you know, there's things that we can do to serve the lunch, and after the lunch is over, then they can come up for snacks. Now we're doing, you know.
Right, right.
Both ways. Now they can have their snacks, but still they would.
And we even had some exploratory conversations that we still have to talk about with some of the staff about, you know, during some other win periods or something like that in the buildings, other opportunities for kids who maybe didn't pack a snack or prefer to buy a snack or didn't have time to get their breakfast, to maybe go down and get those meals at an alternate time and to help increase participation. So we're looking at, you know, those aren't all, you know, we have to finalize some things on that, but just, you know.
Look at the staffing impact with that as well.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Because if we have to bring extra people in to command that, then.
Yeah, I've had it two to five years.
So throwing that out there.
In the interest of the agenda, which is still not getting any shorter. Does anyone have any other questions for Director Banas?
No, thank you. So we'll get an update on some of those things.
Yeah.
Like you say, you're trying, trying something new, and if it works, it works. If it don't, try something else.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. For the FY20 budget, there's not a lot of updates right now. I did include just the legislative bulletin from the MASC. I don't know if you guys get that electronically to your own emails or not, but I just figured I'd share that with you. I know I gave you the projected numbers on that already. You know, for expenditure updates, I don't really have much right now. You know, we're still really, the point we're really zeroing in on right now and trying to really capture is the out-of-district special ed costs. I just feel like that's one of those things that the last few weeks has been changing day to day. Every one day, one day it'll be good and one day it won't be good. So we're really trying to capture that. Our timeline, what I would like to do is shoot for, not our next meeting, because that's right after vacation, so that's going to be a short week for our office, but the meeting after that, so one month from now, March 11th, what I'd like to do is kind of deliver to you guys basically like version A of our, of our budget. So not the preliminary one, but one that would look more complete, like a packet, kind of like we had last year, with some more fine-tuned adjustments. So if you guys are comfortable with that, and we can get you, you know, we'll get that to you in advance, too, so you can look at it, and we'll do another, another update. But I think if we can, I think by, by March 11th, we should be able to have a pretty good snapshot of what we think, what we think we, where we think we are. So. I did, I know there was a question last meeting about some of the surrounding towns per pupil expenditures, so I did put a packet in here. I did make a little table. The table I just kind of summarized from our report. This is FY17 numbers, because this is the most current that they publish, because they don't have all the 18 numbers up yet. You can see there's two different numbers, though. There's the total per pupil expenditure, there's also the in-district per pupil expenditure. So, for example, I think the discrepancy between our in-district and total per pupil is maybe more dramatic than some other communities, because our vocational tuition actually runs through our budget as opposed to a separate budget if you're a, a member of a regional vocational district. So I think that causes a little bit of our discrepancy. But you can see, I sorted this by, I tried to include kind of surrounding towns, and Karen, obviously, should get that, she did a lot of the legwork pulling the reports for me for this. But we tried to include surrounding towns. A couple of towns that are on here, like the, if you remember from the radar reports I shared with you earlier this year, like Webster and Gardner were ones that are kind of listed as comparable to us, so I included them in there as well.
Yep. Is, so you're, I'm learning this for the first time. So you're saying that the ASBET numbers, for example, are absorbed into that, and that's where we're seeing some of the discrepancy?
That's where I see a discrepancy between in-district and total per pupil, yeah.
Not to give you another math homework assignment.
Yeah.
But is there easy access to see what it would look like with ASBET pulled out of it, so we can see what the impact of ASBET is on us, but also a more accurate reflection? Or is that what the 12 is?
That's the.
The 12, 337 is the in-district, so that, that also takes out all your special education outplacements as well. So that's why there's a.
Outplacements, I understand.
Right. And our, but ours, technically, our vocational outplacements are in that as well.
Okay, so, but what I'm saying is, that 12 takes out the ASBET number?
Yeah, it does. So the 12 should be accurate, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I misunderstood that.
Yeah, so the in-district per pupil is like apples to apples.
Okay.
The total is where ours is a little skewed, because we have the ASBET in there, where a lot of districts wouldn't have that.
So then it's ASBET by itself that it's bringing it up that much?
The discrepancy, not just ASBET, that also includes your out-of-district placements as well. But, but yes.
Is there a way to.
Look at the difference.
See it broken down by like the category?
Yeah, I mean, you can see, if we go to the next page, let's see, is it this one? So if you go to the third page, so not the, not the landscape one, there's the Clinton per pupil expenditure details, and you can see it's all broken down by category. If you go to the second page of that, it says page two of two, it's like, I got like three sections on there. You can see the, the out-of-district expenditures there. And, so that has everything in there. So that has like, how much is spent by the town for school choice out, how much is spent by the town for charter schools. That tuition to mass schools of like the, the 1.5 million is about, is mostly the ASBET tuition. And then we've got our non-public schools, collaboratives, and those, those other ones down below are basically our out-of-district special ed ones.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Because like the document you shared with us from the MASC, the reimbursement back to the district for charter schools, for example, is changing.
Yeah, exactly.
We're getting a reduction in that reimbursement.
Yeah, and Karen's been doing a lot of work on that, trying to, she's been on, on the horn with them, trying to make sure we understand the impact of that as well. Yep, so she's been working on those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, I mean, that's just, you know, really just kind of food for thought, so you can see, but I mean, you know, you could see our in-district per pupil expenditure of all those is, is the lowest. I mean, that's not, I didn't put us at the top, I sorted it, you know, in ascending order, right? So, but that's, so that's just, you know, information. Like we said, hopefully that'll, that's part of why I think we're getting an increase in the governor's proposal for the foundation budget reform, and hopefully that'll help us out, so. Unless there's no other questions on that, the, the next, the next piece of paper you have in here, it's a policy, policy DDA, Title II-A, Title III-A, Supplement, Not Supplant Policy and Procedures. So this hasn't gone to any policy subcommittee or anything like that. We had to send in a federal grant, we had a federal grant desk audit this year. So we sent in the, our federal grant desk audit documents. One of the things they got back to us on and said we were missing was a supplement, not supplant, policy for Title II-A and Title III-A grants. So basically, you know, supplement, not supplant means, you know, these, we need to use these grants to provide additional services, we can't use them to really replace things that were in the budget already. So the, this is a policy that's kind of, it's just, it's a required policy. This is a sample that they provided to us and said, this is a model policy. So if the committee is, I have to respond to these questions from the desk audit and get the, get the information back to them. So if the committee is comfortable with this policy, in a perfect world, you would make a motion to approve it and kind of waive the, the readings and just sort of approve it now. If there's any questions on the policy, I can certainly look at it, but it really is just the, it's the model policy that we took from them in response to our desk audit for our federal grants.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept policy DDA, waiving the readings.
I'll make a motion to propose policy DDA and waiving any additional readings.
I second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I tried to pass off the grant assurances document as our policy, and they didn't like it, so, no, I can send them this.
Yeah.
Okay, just some other updates.
Get this one.
The 1920 calendar is, we have the next, the next version of this. The professional development, the main, the big change here is a professional development day that had been on January 17th, kind of just till we found a home for it. We've moved that to November 8th. That does do a couple of things. One, I reached out to other superintendents, and November 8th is a day that Tejano is intending to have a full day professional development day, so it will allow us opportunities to collaborate with Tejano and Berlin Boylston. Also, reaching out and talking to the middle school, we were looking at different dates potentially for the Washington DC trip to try to minimize the impact on the loss of learning time. However, right now, those still seem to be cost prohibitive for, for next year. So they do want to try to keep that first week in November for next year. So one of the thoughts is, at least this way, the five-day trip, they're only missing four days of school. It helps negate, negate that impact by about 20%. The flip side of that is, we will probably have about seven teachers who will be chaperoning the trip who might miss some of the PD. But in the grand scheme of it, that's, there's, there's still plenty of teachers here to learn. And we'll do what we need to do to, to catch up those teachers. The only other change is on March 3rd, March 6th now is a half day. Previously, that was March 13th. That half day has been moved to the 6th, because Neshoba has a full day PD day on March 6th That half day has been moved to the 6th because Neshoba has a full day, PD day on March 6th next year, where they're anticipating having one, I guess I should say. And it's to provide hopefully another opportunity for us to collaborate with other districts in terms of professional development. You know, particularly for those, you know, in smaller districts, when you have, you know, you might only have two school psychologists or you might only have a handful of speech teachers or something. Opportunities to sort of get some more job-alike type partnerships, I think are great. So that's why, you know, we didn't just, we tried to strategize a little bit in terms of where those land. I don't, I don't anticipate we're gonna do, you know, full-scale, 200 teachers go into each district, but we'll start somewhere and try to see what we can do to, to improve those days.
I think it's a great first step. The state of New Jersey, for example, does a long weekend where, you know, virtually anyone in the state can come and they co-op all this professional development. So I, you know, I think it's great. Why not leverage all of these opportunities?
Yeah, so if you want to accept the calendar as it is, if you guys are comfortable with it, with those changes, we can accept it and get, and move forward. If not, I, you know, whatever, whatever your pleasure is.
I'll make a motion to accept the calendar.
I'll second the motion to accept the calendar.
Motion being made and seconded, is there any discussion, discussion, sorry, on the calendar? There being none. All those in favor? Motion approved, calendar is accepted, thank you.
You know, I don't know, some of these other ones are just kind of quick ones, hopefully we can get to them. But the athletic survey, just tried to make the changes that we kind of discussed at the last one. We split it up by season, basically kind of duplicating some of the questions by season. Also, another question there of what level they were most recently involved. Just kind of made, just another way to help to segregate the data, whether it's, are we talking about more middle school or high school essentially is really what would be able to do that. So that's, I think that's just going to give us some more, more ability to sort that data and filter it out. That's the way it's, way it's broken up now.
And you guys think it makes sense to do a, go like season by season as opposed to like just one at the end of the year? Doesn't really make a difference, but I'm just, it looks like this one's fall, so I'm assuming that...
Well, there's, all of them are in here, so they repeat, so fall, then winter, then spring. So we could give it to, we could give it to them, I think, whenever we want, and they would go and you'd fill it out.
Gotcha, okay.
For each season, so you could fill out for one person.
All right.
And I think we can, we can work on the directions, and we can probably talk about that in marketing when we want to talk about how we want to disseminate it. But we can look at the directions and to make sure they're clear to people that they can fill out, you know, one per athlete if they want, if they had, you know, kids in different sports, if they want to capture those experiences, those types of things.
Yeah, and the idea of sending them out at the end of each season because they're fresh, right? You wait until the year and they're like, you know, right?
But I think, I mean, or maybe we do that if we want to do it now. Maybe we do one now that's just fall and winter, because they should, we can do a fall one, and then maybe we do a spring one.
I know this is the first one, you know.
Yeah, we're just trying to capture it, yeah. Once we get the tool, then we can do it, you know, whenever we want, so. Human resource posting, that should be up, is that up now? So we put the human resource posting on school spring today, I believe, and I think it's going to be in the item on Friday. That's the plan. And then I think it's open until March 15th, I think it's going to be the closing date for that. I was talking to Mr. Ward today, and the, the plan would be to do kind of a, and I think I mentioned a similar search committee to the facilities director, so looking for probably two members of the school committee who might be interested in serving on that search committee. So we can start thinking about that, I don't know. Do you want them just to reach out to you, Joel, if they're interested?
Sure, that's fine, unless you have a burning interest right now that you'd like to make public. You can just reach out to me and, in your capacity to serve.
I'm always available.
For those of you, service is so important.
You know I'm always available.
And then the last update here, municipal safety committee, I did talk to Mr. Ward again today, and we met about, remember we talked about for OSHA, looking at that safety committee, we talked about maybe trying to form one, big one for the town. He was certainly open to the idea, he thought it kind of seemed sort of like the way we do the SEMA-type thing where we have all the, all the boards in town. So I think we're gonna try to continue to explore that with, you know, with Chris McGowan and Russ and everybody, and just try to see who we can bring together for that. So I think that, that was a good suggestion to look at it municipal-wide, and I think it might, we might be able to do that, so. So I think that's all I had.
Great, under chairperson's report, I, you've already covered the fact that the, under the safety committee, that there's training on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of the break at the elementary school. We have nothing new from curriculum or marketing at this time. Anything under old business?
If you don't mind, I would just bring to your attention two things that you probably had in your packet. You did get the result of our tiered focus monitoring report, which I know we've talked about many times. This is the official report, and you can see it did find that we were, for civil rights and special ed, that we were in compliance, so there was no, no findings for that. So we were, we were in the implemented stage for all of those. I think there might have been one finding on, sorry, there's one non-compliance for secondary transition, but that's already been, that's already been rectified, and we have the, we have the communication of that as well. The other communication you got was the, the audit, the final audit report. You know, we, this is from FY18, so we've, we've talked about that a little bit in the past. And this is just the, we just recently got this back, and there was no findings in this as well. It was a very, very clean report, so, just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you very much. Anything under new business?
Was the discussion up for changing our meeting time from 7:00 to 6:30?
We could certainly add it to new business. Could we add it to the next agenda perhaps, in the interest of time?
Sure.
Okay, so add that to, as an agenda meeting, so we keep the 25th at 7 o'clock and we add the discussion as an agenda item. Okay, perfect.
Steve, the, the first program, they do that chairman's award. It's like a video presentation about like the robot and the competition and everything. And I know, I've talked to them about possibly to practice, they, they're interested in doing it for us. And I think it'd be good for us too to get an idea of the robot they're building and the competition and everything. I tentatively like talked to them about maybe the next meeting after this meeting, but I...
The one the architects are at, the 25th?
So now I'm thinking like maybe, I don't want to put them on something that's going to be like a real busy, you know, I don't want to like flood one meeting with like so many things, so we can talk off on it.
Yeah, we can work out something that works for them for their timeline too, because we want to practice before they need to present it, yeah.
Right, right.
All right.
I mean, it might make sense to have them as part of one of our community celebrations as well, where they have a nice big audience for the program.
Sure, yeah, yeah. I think the next one might even be community outreach, so maybe it is, maybe we'll, let me double check on that. Maybe we can do it next meeting.
Yeah, if they did it first thing, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't, as far as they're concerned, it wouldn't really matter.
Wouldn't make any difference. Architects are paid, they can wait.
Anything else in new business?
I have, I have one more, yeah.
Give you the last word.
Okay, so do you have a letter that I received today, it's dated February 11th? Dear Dr. Meyer, I'm writing to inform you that after a great deal of reflection, I will be retiring from the position of principal of Clinton High School. I'll be stepping down this summer, soon after the end of the present school year. I will gladly remain to assist in the transition for the person who will be fortunate to become the principal of Clinton High School. There is no greater honor for a Clintonian and Clinton High School graduate like myself to return and serve and sit in such a special seat as the principal of Clinton High School. Over the years, this town has supported me in many ways. I hope and pray that I have given back just a small fraction of what I take with me. I thank the staff, students, parents, and community members who I've had the privilege of working with. Sincerely, Mr. James S. Hastings.
Can we vote to not accept it?
So, and I don't know, I don't know how to follow that, but...
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Well, there'll be, I'm sure no shortage of thank yous and celebrations.
Allow us to be the first to thank you for your service.
Schedule is painted.
Schedule is painted, yeah.
Under Chapter 30A, Section 21 of Massachusetts General Law, Open Meeting Law, the committee will enter into executive session to discuss strategy in preparations for negotiations with non-teaching personnel and non-union personnel. The committee will not reconvene. Requires a voice vote.
Ed DeValle, aye.
Michael McIntyre, aye. Joel Bates, aye. Amy Bailey, aye.